Apologize for the slight delay there, everybody. Welcome to the Norton School Committee meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now that we've got the meeting started, we're going to immediately go into a recess for the purposes of some recognition. So forgive us, but we will go into a short recess.
In the auditorium.
In the auditorium.
Student presentations.
For the purposes of student presentations, we will see you all shortly. We like to make sure we get the entire everybody in.
Yeah.
Okay, we are back. We called a slight audible, and we're going to bring a couple people from downstairs upstairs. So we are now on the recognition of Massachusetts Foreign Language Association poster contest participant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I received notification from the Massachusetts Foreign Language Association, or the MAFLA, which is our association for foreign languages in the Commonwealth, if you will. And they would like to say, presented a thank you to Ms. Kim Gray, who was our teacher here at Norton Middle School, who's here with us tonight. Thank you, Ms. Gray. And specifically recognize Alex Georges for submitting a poster in the "We Got This" theme contest this year. And the annual poster contest is an excellent way to promote the relevance and importance of foreign language education across Massachusetts. The poster judges were impressed by the creative and artistic responses to the chosen theme emphasizing the important role that foreign language plays in the diverse world. So at this time, on behalf of a certificate of participation that acknowledges that Alex Georges has been recognized for their participation in the poster contest for the middle school division in May 2021, signed with the signature of Teresa A. Benedetti, who is the Board of Directors member that signed itself. Let's go. Go right in front of here, so everybody in the world can see you. Put that light.
Impression.
This is yours. Right, mom, dad, family, come on up. Teacher?
Teacher.
Educator? We like to make sure we get the entire everybody in. Hi, guys.
I was concerned.
We just, everybody gets to say, "Big wave into the real world." Smile over here for Karina. Hold on. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking the time to come out today.
Thank you.
That's worth a steak dinner on the way home. Bye, folks. Appreciate it.
All right. Next up, we have the recognition for the Norton Robotics Team Bot Ball competition participants.
So at this time, what I'm going to do is, I'm actually going to, and she doesn't know this yet, but I don't think our students are here. So what we're going to do is, I'm going to ask a member of our staff, Carrie Murphy, who has really been an integral part of starting a computer science program at the high school. So if you want to come up this way that way the audience can see you as well, talk a little bit about this wonderful program. You can take it off. For this portion.
Okay, Carrie Murphy, I started here three years ago, and we have computer science and a bunch of different classes, and robotics is part of it. This actually is a class, so we have robotics, the introductory classes, and then this is the advanced robotics class that they are part of a tournament called Bot Ball. And the best part about that tournament is that they have to build it and code it, and they have to do it all on their own with no help from any adults. They have to problem solve the whole time. It's really cool to see them problem solving. It's not really just about the coding. It's really about figuring out how to solve the scenario. So this year, the scenario is, you know, we have to try to move to a new plan, and we have to bring all the resources with us. There's always something that a real robot would really do in real life in the tournament. And then we had these really great guys for the hybrid. I mean, they were doing work at home, in school, and then they did a competition. And I came in the top 25. And it was, it's an international competition. So that's why we're recognizing them today.
We have two students.
Yeah, sure. It's Ryan Stroney and Ryan Fitzroy. They're juniors, and they're into engineering and IT and computer science. So they're really lovely.
Awesome. And we'll make sure that we'll mail these to them. But the other thing, too, I think it's a formality here, and I'm putting you on the spot. But talk about the amount of time and effort that goes into this. I know you put in extra time and effort. I've gotten emails about the weekend. I've gotten emails about the evenings. Talk a little bit about that, because I think this is such a new program for us that we started when I stole you from another district.
So I wanted to do the robotics class in school because I didn't want to just limit who could be doing it after school. So we do a lot of it in school. And then this year, we even had more classes in the robotics ones with building. And then the robotics two program, we did a little bit of after school. Last year, we started a club with it, and your daughter was in it. And so she's part of this, too. She built the whole floor for it. And so that part, you can do after school a little bit, mix it with the class in school. And then, yeah, we always have to go to a training on the weekends. This year, it was virtual. And we did, they'd have a virtual robot that we could use, too, so we had to get trained on that. We met with them online, with Zoom calls, with the president of the company. And then we also did this whole Saturday. It was a really long day this year because it was virtual, it was different. Ms. Winsber came, too. Thank you. It was so nice of you. It was really fun, actually. It's the only funny thing that happened, but the really cool things happen were, you know, fixing your robot in a half an hour because whoops, you used the wrong part. We didn't know. Or, you know, things like that. So they really adapted well. It just shows them, it's a good way to get engineering into the school, actually. So we have other engineering classes. It's a good mix. It's a good mix of like electrical, mechanical. We have, you know, construction. We have all the different kinds. So we're getting there.
And this is a pathway that we're working on in the next couple of years to really get students that are interested in those roundabout areas to really utilize, not only Carrie, but potentially other staff that we're going to have to add because the program will grow. Because, as you know, we have a ton of kids who go on to some type of engineering when they graduate. So anything to do with this STEM STEAM world is where we're headed. So thank you so much for all that effort and time that you put in as well.
Thank you. I just want to say, one more thing is that, I just want to make it clear that these classes are for everyone. They're introductory classes. It isn't advanced class, but anybody can do that right after they try something else. It's, I just want to emphasize that anyone can take it. We see like one down our graphic taking it, but it's for creative people. People who like art, people who like to invent things, people who like the hands-on. So it's anyone who likes the wood job classes. It's all for that, too.
That's an awesome statement.
So very quickly, I want to say before you step down. So I met Ms. Murphy tonight for the first time, and I was really excited to do that. And I mentioned to her, I was hoping to meet her because, as you mentioned, my daughter Malia was right over there. Hey, Malia. She's in the robotics.
Murphy, I love you.
And she's, she has spoken so highly of the influence you have in her life, the effort you put into getting these kids and teaching them and introducing them to a subject which they, frankly, a lot of them may know nothing about, particularly, you know, females. So, but in any case, I want to thank you for the absolutely phenomenal, wonderful, and thank you out of my own way.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you as well.
Dennis, can I just pipe in, too? I just want to say, I remember when you were hired. And one of the first times I met you, we were at the high school, and you were talking about all you wanted to do for the program. And we were so excited to welcome you and really see what you were going to do. Never in my mildest dreams did I think in three years you would be, you have taken our schools to where they are now. So I just want to thank you.
Thank you so much, guys. Congratulations. It's not a hard thing to get support in this town. Thank you so much.
Well done.
Thanks.
I think it's always important to get in with the robot people because when there's a robot up our eyes all over, no, I don't care, Murphy, I'm cool.
Carrie, if you can help us, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, we need you on, you know, privacy and data.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on. Sorry.
Minutes?
Yeah. Next up, we have the vote to approve the minutes of the May 27, 2021 opening meeting. Has everybody had a chance to vote?
Yes.
Any corrections? There is one correction.
Jamie?
I did this. The correction is, oh, I got it. Okay. So we corrected it to be, we corrected to note that Catherine was not there for that meeting, I think.
No, I understand.
No, the minutes applied for it.
That's right. Notes it at the bottom of the first meeting.
Yeah, so we, that the minute approval is a five to nothing motion carries. It should only be four motion carries. She actually would not be able to vote on that.
For the grievance.
May 27, right?
Yes, the minutes, the minutes that, Lex, you weren't here for the meeting of the minutes.
The meeting before.
Yeah, I think they put a five to nothing. It should be four.
Yeah, yes, yes, yes.
So if nobody else has any changes outside of that, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I would just like to thank whoever did the notes that suggest to say that they kept my, about the 97 essays, very concise, and I appreciate that.
Second. Okay, all those in favor, and we are going to have to go back to roll. I think we were going to, we've been told we have to. So Mrs. Cern?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
She?
Yes.
It's a process, yes.
Five zero is a change.
Five zero. All right. Next up, we have the warrants.
I have reviewed and approved the following warrants. School expense warrants, June 3, 2021, School payroll warrants, June 3, 2021, I would enter them into public record.
Council? Okay. All right, next up, we have the student representative update. Zoe Duran is either at an AP test or studying for an AP test, so she is not here. Malia is coming to us remotely, is that right? Malia, take a break.
Hi, so you'll notice I'm actually not in my room. I'm actually at the high school right now because I'm going to show you guys something cool. I'm going to fly through really quickly the other school updates about what they're doing. You'll hear a band in the background, I'm sorry. So LGN has field day, grade three picnic, spirit week. Yale has field day, fifth grade celebration. And a lot of the students, we asked them what their favorite part of the year was. So a lot of that was in person. Their teachers, specials, new friends, meeting new friends from the DCS with the LGN sides, mask breaks, outside reading, PJs, podcasts, science, and back to normal. GCS, their highlights were special snacks, new friends, writers workshop, their teachers, field day, the playground, STEM, helping people, and coming back to school full time. And lastly, for NMS, spirit week, they have lots of sports wins going on. The future of their softball team is supposed to be very bright. They're going to have a guest speaker, and they're going to have a LANZER luau. So I'm actually at the high school right now because I'm at the music department's coffee house, which is a super fun way, sorry, I'm like walking, but a super fun way for the music department to, you know, show their students off. And I'm actually going to show you guys, if that's okay? And have everyone say hi real quick. And then that'll be it for me. But I'm walking over there right now. So, yeah, so Zoe couldn't be here tonight, but, yeah.
Just that you know, as Malia is walking over, these two ladies I just saw. I get this thorough email from Zoe. Of course, I said, "I understand academics first. You know, thank you for your service this year. Can't wait to see you again next year."
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Zoe, for communicating.
Yeah. We'll continue.
Perfect.
Happy to have you.
So that's our coffee house. So that's why I'm walking around. Sorry, I'm also part of the coffee house. But, yeah, that's, I think that's pretty much it for me. I hope you guys have a great summer. You deserve it, off.
You, too. Thanks, Malia.
Bye.
Thank you very much. So, and it's kind of, like you were saying about they're very professional, very good. I really, and I told my wife, I'm struggling to say this without nepotistic or anything like that because Malia is obviously my daughter. And Zoe is currently with the family as well. So, but I have to say, I really enjoyed the way that they've done it this year.
Absolutely.
I like it. I'm a big fan of the twist to it. It's not just separate figures, what happened. It's more of a sense of what the mood is in each school. And I really like that.
I agree, yeah. I absolutely agree.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, you and I have been at this quite a while. We've had some good reps over the years, not to speak down by any words on them, but this is one of the better crew that I've seen. But I would like to see, I know there's been a couple of weeks where they sent it in here back from one of the administrators. So I think we need to, you'll send a gentle reminder that, you know, these are, these are another advocate for your schools to talk to us. So I think the administrators need to just, friendly, gentle reminder that if you have something that your students bring to you, by all means, this is an avenue for them to come in and talk.
Right.
Yeah, I think that'll be nice. I mean, I think this year, I think we've kind of given a little bit of a pass just because of what the administrators have gone through with COVID. But I agree. I mean, I think the way that they've done, I think everything has evolved, right? Every year, every student rep that we've had has just kind of gotten better and better over the years. kind of gotten better and better over the years since I've been here. It's nice to see. Yeah, I'm glad they'll be back.
Anybody else? Okay, next up, we're going to go to review and vote on student handbook changes.
So Mr. Dollman is here. There he is. Principal Dollman will be bringing you up to date on one area of the dress code that we wanted to get it out, we wanted to get out before he goes out for the school year and has his dress code. Mr. Dollman.
Yes, thank you. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of background on the document that was presented to school committee here as far as where it came from and the process that went into sort of arriving at it. It began really with a conference between the middle school and the high school administrators, sort of taking a look at our current policy. At that point in time, we actually took a look at dress codes that were in the Tri Valley League as our peer schools. That's 11 other schools. We also took a look at some sort of national examples as well to take a look at it, most notably, I think, from Seattle Public Schools and a few others. And some of the things that we really sort of wanted to get across with our dress code here had to do with bringing it back to our school's mission, as well as the portrait of a Norton graduate, and thinking about decisions that students make when they're in the school and when they're coming into school, that they have the right to express themselves, but they also want to be thinking about it in terms of the purposes for which they're dressing. We also circulated surveys to both faculties at the middle school and the high school, particularly on kind of hot button issues such as the wearing of hats, hoods, things like that, that were restricted in the previous draft or the previous policy of the dress code. The other things that we sort of were interested in is taking a look at this with a little bit of a critical eye to make sure that it was as inclusive as possible and that the language of the policy did not sort of target any group, gender, or anything like that. So we wanted to make it as inclusive as possible. And that was really the thing that we were our driving sort of forces with this. We also circulated it to a few different student groups at the high school to get their sort of take on that sort of inclusiveness, as well as obviously through our site councils, which have student representatives as well. So we tried to get quite a bit of input on this as possible. And as you can see, sort of taking a look at it, we start off with affirming those values. And then we talk about sort of the the things that we might have to restrict in order to make sure that our building is safe and healthy and that there are no disruptions to the educational process. And we sort of outline those things as far as what is sort of barred as far as the attire that could infringe upon the education of others. And then we do come back to this based on some of the other sort of survey results, what we're thinking of as far as things that would now be sort of allowed in schools, such as hats, certainly hoodies. We had a lot of discussion about whether or not hoods could be worn up and just ultimately determined that we want them to remain down. And then finally, the thing that we put in here is that we also wanted to affirm teachers' ability to restrict the different things in their classrooms that are specific to their classroom and sort of make sure that that teachers have the ability and were supported by this policy. If for a instructional or safety reason, they wanted to prohibit the wearing of certain attire in their classroom. And so that kind of encapsulates the whole policy there as far as our process and some of the things that we wanted to make sure we highlighted within it.
Okay, before I open it up for comments from the school committee, I do want to say to the audience who's joining us via Zoom, this was a topic that we had received some correspondence about in the past. So if there's anybody who is joining us via Zoom that you have any comments or questions, if you would put those in the chat, please, we'll be able to refer those and see those. So start doing that if you do. And I'm going to open it up to comments from school committee.
So this will go across the two schools. This is. Right. Yeah, those are the recommendation from the administration to my office to you tonight is to to take this new dress code process, if you will, and put it into our student handbook for next year. We'll collect data throughout the year. Usually when we change something, that's what we try to do, see if there's any hiccups. But, you know, I think Dennis spoke very clearly that, you know, this was a very much a driven student and parent issue that's come up. You'll see that the that instead of talking about types of clothing, we've eliminated because only really certain groups of people wear certain clothings, you know. And so if anything, what this does is also really supports one of the things that we're known for, that's our LGBTQ community and our transgender community, and allows for students to to make good decisions. And that's what we want them to do. It also still allows for us to concentrate on issues of safety, i.e. in some of our tech areas where students are utilizing saws and cutting things that, you know, having certain clothes in that type of situation may not work, just like in a lab, you have to make sure you have goggles. That's another area. And then I think the last part is that we're trying to clearly articulate to students some choice. That's true. We're giving that some of that up, if you will. But I also think we're trying to make sure that students understand that there's the there's right places for things to take place. And I think that's that speaks to that here. So I'm supporting it. Want to collect some data on it. I think it will lead to some further discussions. But I don't think that people can say some other things and accusations, if you will, about, you know, well, you targeted me because I wear that. This is more about making good decisions.
So and I will say, you know, I think I think this makes more sense than the you can't do this, you can't do this, you can't do this. I like the idea, like you said, kind of, hey, listen, we're going to treat like grownups. We expect to make more decisions. If you don't, then we don't treat you like grownups anymore. All that being said, I do want to say that on on this policy and on any of our policies, really, they're all always works in progress. They're always, you know, they're always open to to change if there's if there's something wrong with it. I think is, you know, Mr. Shee said earlier, we've been doing this for a while. And we've always listened to people. If there's been a complaint, if there's been an issue, we're certainly willing to listen. Doesn't mean we necessarily always agree, but we're going to listen to you. In this case, I think we listened. I like the revision. I like the way it's written out. So I'm for it as well.
Does require a vote of the school committee.
Okay. Any other comments? Janet, are there any comments or?
There are no comments or questions.
No comments or questions. Okay. Okay. With all that said, then I would entertain a motion to approve the changes in language to the student handbooks.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Okay, all those in favor? Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Shee?
Yes.
And Salas, yes.
All right.
Next up, we have the vote to approve the administrative assistance contract memorandum of agreement for 2021, 2022.
Thank you, Chairman. Before you tonight, you have a copy of the one-year tentative agreement beginning on the July 1 of this year, ending June 30, 22. It's a salary scale adjustment for that unit. To be quite honest, as you see, it has a senior administrative assistant, steps one through 10, 15, and 16, the administrative assistant, one through 10, 15, and 16, and then guidance administrative assistant as well as from one through 10 and then 15, 16. The way that works so that the committee's clear is once you get to step 10, you're going to sit there for five years before you get to 15. So you're only getting your colleague, you're not getting anyone as well. When we looked at this, our goal here was to try to make ourselves more competitive. This still doesn't get us to the to the top in any way, shape, or form, but it does absolutely make us more competitive and also allows for people to want to stay within this. And it does fit within our budget proposal. Matt's here tonight, but it does fit within our budget proposal that you approved. So I recommend that you approve it. The union has voted it and accepted it before today.
Any comments or questions? How many members in the team?
This is a small unit. So this would be three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 members, if I'm correct. I think it's 10 members off the top of my head. I believe it's 10. So it's a small, it's a small group. And they're an association, which is a little different from a union. They don't take out dues and stuff, but they bargain together and have stuff. And so great, great work to work with.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the administrative assistance contract memorandum of agreement for 2021, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
Shee?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Thank you. I've signed it on your behalf.
Excellent. Next up, we have the vote to approve the superintendent's contract for 2021, 2022.
That's on you.
I was going to say.
It's the second year of a second year. It's the beginning of a second, second year of a six-year contract.
And I believe this is we revised the salary.
Correct.
Okay, so you all had a chance to take a look at this. So we're revising the salary to $213,557 for July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2021. Does anybody have any question or not?
Twenty twenty two.
Sorry, 22.
Yeah, 2022, sorry.
Yep. The revision that I just made.
Any questions or comments?
There was every year, Joe. This was a, I wish that.
Jesus, we lowball.
Honestly, I wish that we could do more. You know, I know that we've said this to you many a times and privately and publicly, but honestly, thank you so much for everything you did this year. I mean, what an incredible year to be on the other end of this when I thought we would never get here. Your leadership, we were just that. We were a leading district and that is because of you and your team that you've put in place. And as a as a parent, I can't thank you enough. Thank you.
It means a lot. And I have the best in our team around. I can't tell you. They're just awesome. And you guys, especially Kathleen, who goes to some of the state meetings with me in the past, we all know it can be contentious. We agree to disagree, I think, in a way that's respectful. And I think that's one of the reasons why I continue to stay here. Money is always important, but lifestyle is more important. So I thank the committee very much for your support.
And I appreciate it. It just goes to show how far we've come to is the communication and the camaraderie that we have. And that's what makes it work.
For sure.
Bless you.
When she sneezes.
Touching moment.
Getting choked up.
Apologize.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's contract revision for 2021, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Shee?
Yes.
Mr. Salas, yes.
Thank you. I'll send along to you.
Next up, we have the superintendent conflict of interest disclosure for extended school year.
As you know, my family pretty much lives in one, even though we don't have an address. But as you also know, ethics is something that's important to me. And this can always be done in many different ways, but I've always chosen that the best way to do this is to do it in a public meeting on the on the docket for any clarification. So I'm asking to please accept this memo as notification to you, the North School Committee, and the Town of Malton, that my daughter Margaret White, a student at North High School, who is a school choice student, has been recommended by Vincent Searcy, director of people personnel services in Conchanda Russo, special education coordinator, to be hired at the rate of $13.25 per hour as a student assistant in the extended school year program. Program runs from July 6 through August 5, Tuesday through Thursday, from 7:45 to 12:15 p.m. Set information and request for school committee code is being made under the conflict of interest laws, and she is my daughter under Massachusetts general laws, chapter 268a. This will be entered into the record with a positive vote of the committee.
Do you have any questions or comments on it?
The total is under $1,000 for the entire summer.
Okay.
Good luck to her.
Yeah. I know, Matt, you're a little bit, Mrs. Stern isn't a very, very nice person, conscientious, so I don't.
He's a two pretty good parents.
Yeah.
That's right.
We need to vote this.
Yes, probably.
How do we word this? Motion to?
Accept the conflict of interest disclosure as presented.
Okay. Motion to accept the conflict of interest disclosure as except as written.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Shee?
Yes.
Mr. Salas, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we got the FY21 summer transfers. Mr. Wells?
Hi, everybody. So this is our annual request. As we close out the fiscal year, we're going to have to make some transfers, but they're going to be after July 1. But they're going to count for this fiscal year. And we're just requesting the ability to make those transfers so that we can close out the year.
Thank you to Mr. Wells, who is on vacation today, but is zooming in to get this done. That's the reason why he's getting back to his hat.
Get your comment, but I'm not all that stifling dressed, dude.
This whole time, Matt, I thought you were awake because of the baseball hat. I couldn't read the name. I thought you were awake because you had a different hat on.
Oh, you didn't. I was I was going to put a suit on, but I figured, well, it's just kind of hot.
Yeah, you're on vacation. Appreciate it.
It does require a vote, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the the FY21 summer transfers. Second.
Second.
All those in favor, Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Shee?
Yes.
Mr. Salas, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the, okay, you can sign off and go back on vacation.
Yeah, go back to the kitchen.
Next up, we have the end of the year report. Dr. Lee.
Thank you. I'm not going to go through this and read it all. It is for public record. But as you know, a few years ago, I started this whole idea of just having us take some bullet items that we feel proud of as an overall district, coming through the work of many people under teaching and learning, my office, the PPS office, the special ed office, instructional technology office, business transportation services, and of course, facilities. I'm going to tell you, this is a lot of good things that are happening that we're proud of. But I also want to go on the docket to say that the number one headache that is out there right now has been our response to Norton in a positive way to teaching and learning to the best that we could, but also our facilities, you know, that we really handled the HVAC issues that were a problem that have caused us not to be open and so on and so forth. So kudos to the men and women under Wade's Department for getting that done. We continue to clean at a high level. We haven't changed so far this year. Teaching and learning, which is the most important thing that we do, I would probably say in some ways was probably number two this year because safety was always the number one thing that we were concerned on. But to Jen's office and her team of people trying to come together and just do a lot of new things like the DLA and all of that that needed to be put together, all of that under the labor management committee and the work of five, four teachers, one paraprofessional, and three administrators. I think the month of May, it's pretty much been the only month we haven't met. We've been meeting forever. And then really trying to get us down to the core of what happened. Remember that we've done two graduations this calendar year, right? This this school calendar year, if you will. We did one in July for the class of 21. We did one for the class of 22 the other day that I thought was pretty awesome, especially the kids' speeches. The student speeches to me are always the best. Salas' is a little long.
Why do you think I left?
You left at a perfect time. And they always have kind of the same theme, I've noticed when he's cheering. And then I think the other part is how we we came back as as fast as we could with our specialized population. So kudos to Vidi and Casey and all of the people underneath there where our multiple people, including a group of people that sometimes don't get recognized, and that's our paraprofessionals, right? The people that are in the trenches with the kids. So our staff and what by staff, I mean, anybody that's connected to teaching and learning in any way. What a fantastic job. And I'll finish later on under other business. I thank some of the folks as well. So that's for your area to me.
I just wanted to add that having seen the Leslie University Trauma Institute program down on the Cape, I'm so proud that we have embraced that and we're still carrying on with it. It's just such a fantastic program and teachers can look at it on their own, you know, when they can. And I just think it's a phenomenal program. And it really gives insight. You think you know until you see something like that and then it gives you a different insight. So I'm proud that we're still a part of that program.
Yeah, very briefly, I was going to say, so when I looked at the list, and it was a longer list of stuff, and I don't say that negative, my thought was originally to try and highlight a couple of things. And I decided not to do that because there were so many good things on there that to highlight one or two would be unfair to the other. It's a comprehensive.
When you look at how we just shifted in March, you know, just everybody, you know, the technology, the technicians, you know, the Paul, the Nixon, and John and Karen, and how they would just outside pick up your your one-to-one stuff. I mean, it's just been a crazy year. And I'm just really, I'm just, thank you, thank you, thank you. That's all I can say. I'll leave it at that.
So, Joe, I just want to say too, like, you know, what I said to you, I think I just, it's worth mentioning now to any teachers who are listening, but, you know, just our admin staff, our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our, you know, our, you know, people in the front offices, our nurses, custodians, I mean, everybody from top to bottom this year, just thank you from the bottom of our heart. I mean, without you guys, we never would have made it through this year. I mean, not only for our kids' sake, but also for us, right? There were many times that we were just done and at our wits' end and, you know, somebody would come in with something that they did that would kind of give us that little boost to kind of still continue through this. boost to kind of still continue through this pandemic. And, um, I just want to publicly thank our entire staff in Norton. Without you guys, this isn't possible, and, um, just thank you so much.
All right, and, and I hate to keep, keep this going, but I will. Uh, I, I want to thank the parents too, because, you know, I know this was a frustrating year. Um, I know that things didn't always go perfectly, they never do. Um, but, but by and large, most of our, our parents were understanding. Um, they, they allowed the district, Joe, and his team, teachers, everybody in schools to do their jobs. And in the end, I, I honestly, I feel like, given the circumstances, we did a, a really good job. Um, yeah, my, my hat's off to, my hat's off to this town. Like, this town, every once in a while, they, they remind me why, why I love living here, why, why I want to be here. So, um, and, and the, the way that this was handled, both internally and externally, that's, that's what it's all about, you know? The, the, the food services guys out there helping out people. I mean, there's, there's the, I mean, like I said, there's a longer list of things you can say, um, that are positive, and, and I don't want to give short trip to anything, but, but just kudos there to everybody.
Yeah, I think the parents too, trusting us to make some really hard decisions this year that we never wanted to make.
Right.
I think that, that, that people in town, that they may not agree with us at first because it was a scary, scary time, you know, it's nice to know that, um, you know, there was trust, and, and like I said, from one of those first meetings last summer, the kindness. There was a lot of kindness this year, and I hope that we can continue that as a town.
Right. And in a lot of cases, it was the least bad choice. It wasn't a good choice, it was the least bad choice.
Absolutely.
You know, and that's, that's what happens sometimes. So, uh, anyways, that's my, my two cents. Um, next up is our, any other comments or questions? Okay. Uh, next up is the personnel update.
Thank you. You have a list of our staff, uh, and I won't read every single person here, but I, I just want to first of all thank our digital learning academy staff, who really came to us in many cases, even into September. Um, but I just want to thank those folks as far as California, who worked with our students online, and it wasn't always perfect, and we knew that, and there were a lot of hiccups that we had to deal with. But I really want to thank all of those folks that went from, from being all on medical moving into the FMLA, uh, FMLA, and then became remote, to those people that actually became part of our culture. Um, so thank you to all of them. Um, you've made it work, and we thank you. Um, we, we, I, I want to say, I, you know, I really want to get to know some of you because again, some of these people I really didn't even meet, if you will, except for me, et cetera, et cetera. Um, we have added, uh, not added new positions, but brought up on 10 people already. Um, so this isn't really lists, uh, we probably have these numbers, we've been very prescient in the hiring process. Um, I want to, uh, say thank you to those that are, uh, choosing to resign because of personal matters or moving to another state or moving to another situation. Um, and I want to take a minute, if you would indulge me, to thank our staff that's retiring. Um, we have 118 years of service, uh, to the North Public Schools, and some of these people did years upon years with other districts as well. Um, so the service is of 118 years, um, of these folks. Rita Bolton, 12 years as the JCS principal. Allison Boylan, our LGN occupational therapist, 19 years. Uh, Richard Godmans, our high school linguist teacher, he'll be in September, but I'd like to just put it out there tonight as well, 18 years. We'll recognize it in a little more form later. Lori Hastings, our kindergarten teacher at the JCS for 20 years. Laura Hoy, our North High School teacher, chairperson for 16 years. And lastly, but not least, the veteran of them all, who spent 33 of her 35 years in public education. Uh, Ms. Mary Taylor, North High School math teacher and academic coordinator, 33 years to North Public Schools.
And number one sportsman.
Yeah.
Number one sportsman, and I, it's my understanding she's still got at least volleyball and basketball scoring that she's going to be doing next year that she's committed to. Um, and I know that, that, uh, some of you know that Mary at times has had some health issues, and she's in, she's battling, she's doing it. Um, she has never wavered, and, um, she's someone that I have tremendous respect for as well. So thank you to all of them for their 118 years of service. There will be a small little recognition there on behalf of the school committee in the North Public Schools, besides the traditional, we're adding a little, something special this year, um, to each as well. And then lastly, um, please come and visit, um, and if you don't mind making $90 or $100 a day, come and sub.
Can I ask, um, how does it work for a retirement that happens sort of in September? So they, they come to?
Yeah, so there's.
Or first 20 days?
Yeah, so there's a, there's a couple of different ways that work. It says things in their contract that they can utilize, right, in terms of, um, personal days and that type of thing. And then in a lot of ways, what we've tried to do is we try to make it a one-to-one discussion usually between my office and Jen's office with the teacher about, listen, we're not going to put you into the classroom right away or at all, but what we're going to do is give you, what would you like to do? Right? And allow for that transition to take place. If it's later in the year, it's fine, but if it's in September, you know, we, we're hiring somebody right away, uh, we're taking care of that, um, and then we try to do it. We've had teachers do projects and curriculum in the instruction office, we've had people at my office, and we've had people who wanted to work in the building. And what they did is they kind of just supported the building and they, they, so we kind of, we want, we want people to go out the way that, and it's comfortable for them, but also good for kids and us. So that, that'll be the approach.
Yeah, I mean, it's not the worst thing to have a couple of extra bodies in school and start something.
No, not at all.
Now, do we, do you want, do we have positions we still need to fill, do you want?
Oh, yeah. Um, I don't have the list before. I can tell you that we hired a team chairperson at the high school, and now we're looking for a team chairperson at the high school. Person resigned to take a different job, so except there's no anxiety, it was great. Um, but we're, we're still looking, for example, for the math position, the team chair position, uh, the English teacher position, those positions as an example, are still all out and going through that process. Recommendations should be coming in the next, as soon as, before even we get out of school, is where I'm here.
All right, uh, before we go to our other business, I just a quick shout out to our graduated seniors.
Yes.
Had a great, uh, great graduation ceremony on Saturday. Um, and I think I said that day was a little warm if you were in a suit, but, uh, by and large, couldn't really ask for a better day.
I'm not sure it was any, um, any cooler last year.
Yeah. I think last year was hotter, but.
Yeah, I think last year, we kind of, um, we were.
I'm glad we did it when we did, and I know that it was at least one or two folks that were concerned about it, but the fact of the matter is, I think 5:30 would have been awful.
It would have been.
And so, um, I think next year will be a little bit more firm, another lesson learned, but.
I think it was great, recognizing students is so important, so.
Yeah, so shout out to all of them. Um, we wish you well in your future endeavors in life, and as Joseph, Mary, come back and visit us. All right, uh, last item on this is other business topics.
I have a number for you, please, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the North High School received a generous donation of $750 to help cover the costs of senior obligations for those students and families indeed adversely affected by the pandemic. The donation was made in loving memory of Mary Amelia Schwartz, who left fourth grade to begin supporting her family and whose great granddaughter is part of the class of 2021. So thank you to that family for their generous donation, which did in fact help the students in the graduate classes. So very generous. Um, I just want to share with you, and I gave your copy, it's yours, this is always one of my, this is so professionally done. So, uh, in, in the front cover, I just wanted to recognize, um, the faculty advisor, Ms. Christine Fay, the student editor, Brianna Cahu, and Ashley Johnson, the student editors, Morgan Casca, Yegida, Lucas, and Grace Souza. Um, and then of course, the support of not only you and, and my office and all of that, but, um, this is really well done. And on page three is the dedication. We did share copies with the North Police Department and the DeFosses family. Um, the, uh, spring 2021 purple pages, North High School, they're written magazine, um, is hereby dedicated in loving memory of Detective Sergeant Stephen Hart DeFosses. So, uh, this are really interesting reads and poems, and, um, I'm, I'm thankful, I've already started reading it, I always read them, it's, it becomes kind of like my summer reading. And on page 28, uh, Lulu, my dog, is present. So I'll share with Lulu as well, so thank you for that. Please save some time. Um, there's some really interesting reads, um, and things that inspire people. Um, the next one is, um, this morning, myself, Mr. Cersei, the middle of the high school administration, General Neal, uh, went to the, uh, underclassmen award ceremony. Um, I've provided you the list of all of the students, um, so, um, you'll know some of the names that, that are on here, and I guess it's a proud data, I can say my kid is on here too. Um, but, uh, really always a nice, uh, this year was, because it was indoors and everything else, we, we stuck, we scheduled this stuff, it's always weeks and one ahead of time, so it was just students. Um, so we made sure that we as administrators were also here, so this is just a list for you to see. I congratulate, uh, congratulations to all of those students. And it was taped for cable, yes, so it will be on cable for those. Um, just wanted to, it's, Mr. Sabas has it, but you were recognized as a committee, uh, for the Magno Award, that will be posted at Central Office, you've already seen that, but they did in fact send us the plaque. Uh, thank you to that. A special announcement, on behalf of the, uh, Greater Adorable Relay for Life, which has held at Norton High School for the last few years, yeah, it's from, uh, it is a drive-through experience and luminarious stroll on the track, Saturday, June 19th, 6 to 9. Yeah, again, North High School, Saturday, June 19th, 6 to 9 P.M., very different process for the Greater Adorable Relay for Life that just came in this afternoon, um, as well.